Yeah, let's just get it. Right after. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council to order for March, or May, whoa, May 14, 2018. If the recorder will please call a roll.
Counselor Kaiser.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here. Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Counselor McCoy. Do you want to do the additions and deletions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I move the additions to the agenda.
Second by Kaiser. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. It's an opportunity for councilors or a city manager to comment. Councilors, anyone want to? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is directed toward the fellow council members but also for the people in the audience. I put an item on the agenda tonight that refers to beginning the process of enacting a single-use plastic bag ban in the city of Salem. That's motion 5C. And I think I've got this word out, but I want to express it tonight, too. This is just, this motion, if passed, will just start the ball rolling. This is not a public hearing where we can testify as to the merits of any sort of plastic bag ban. And I know there are a lot of people here, and I appreciate that very much. So when it's time for the public comments, because we have a huge agenda tonight with various other matters, I'm hoping that only one or two people will speak and then ask everybody who's here in favor of the motion to stand. And I think that'll accomplish the purpose of the people who are here tonight and also move the matter forward because we will have at least one public hearing on this at some later date, assuming it passes.
Yes. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, that I think, and as folks speak to that, the discussion really focuses on, please pass the motion to create an ordinance so we can talk about this issue in the future is really where we're headed on this. Great. Any other comments? Yes. Sorry. Not yet. Any other comments? Okay. Very good.
If I may.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager. Yes.
If I may. Two items. One, the air conditioning is trying to catch up with the record heat of today, so please be patient as the system catches up. And second, I would like to introduce Chris Fabian from the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting to say a few words to council and the community regarding a process that the city is embarking upon tomorrow for aligning our resources with council priorities. So, Chris?
Very good. Mayor, council, thank you very much, Steve, and thank you, everybody here. I promise to keep my comments short. I'm very excited to be here. My name is Chris Fabian, and tomorrow the city embarks on its priority-based budgeting implementation. You'll be the third city in Oregon to implement and among just about 200 across the country who are now practicing this line of thinking. I will say, as I was imagining how to keep this to five minutes, what I hope many of you will learn is that this idea of priority-based budgeting, especially for the citizens in the room, really transforms what you know to be the budget process into something much more profound, which is understanding how all of your resources, all the resources that come into this city and all the resources, frankly, that get used across this community by other entities, are aligned with the outcomes and the results that you're trying to accomplish. back when we created this process around the time of the Great Recession. Your staff has shown great interest in priority-based budgeting for quite some time. And back then, our work centered with the city of Fort Collins, Colorado, who, if anybody has kept up with their story, just won the Malcolm Baldrige Award, which is one of the most prestigious awards given to any organization, public sector or private sector, and is usually reserved for the private sector. They're the third city to ever win it. As you talk to their city manager, as he reflects on their work in priority-based budgeting, what started in the Great Recession as a way to deal with limited resources coming in and yet growing needs from your community has evolved quite substantially from that period of time. Many of you might think that you really put a lot of focus on the budget process during tough times, but even during times when we are not having to cut the budget, what's so exciting about priority-based budgeting is you can really focus on the future and how to take the resources you have and optimize them towards the new programs that you're hoping to start to design a better future in the city of Salem. Tomorrow, we kick off with staff. We have a full day planned, and I think around noon, there's an opportunity for council members and for those on the Budget Committee to come and hear a lot more about this exercise. But we're thrilled to be here. Thank you for having us, and we'll be seeing a lot of each other over the course of the next few months. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other comments?
No.
Okay. I've got a couple of proclamations. I wanted to invite up Rosa Macias and Gary Atwood, Sergeant Gary Atwood, if Gary's Whereas the men and women in the armed forces of the United States have placed the security of our nation before their own safety, and America will be forever grateful for their service. And whereas Memorial Day is celebrated every year to collectively reflect on the memories of those who have served this country and to be reminded that freedom is never free. And whereas we honor our fallen soldiers, our military personnel, and our ideals of freedom, and we pay tribute to their personal sacrifices. And whereas in Salem, Oregon, we're committed to honoring the memories of service members who perished in service to their country with reverence and gratitude. And whereas each person who lost their life in service to his or her country was a loved one who is cherished by family and friends, and each death was a tremendous loss to the community, state, and nation, now therefore I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May 28, 2018, as Memorial Day 2018, and call upon all residents to reflect upon the service of our courageous men and women in uniform and thank them for the ultimate sacrifice they've given to protect our freedoms and liberty dated this 14th day of May 2018. Hope you'll join me in applauding our veterans. He's Director of the Marion Pope County Salvation Army located out at the Ray and Jean Crock Ministry and Community Center. Joined by Captain Williams is the Salvation Army Salem Crock Advisory Board Chair, Ryan Dempsey. Great. Whereas the Salvation Army, since its founding in Great Britain in 1865, has provided humanitarian relief and spiritual guidance to people throughout the world. And whereas the Salvation Army serves as a symbol of compassion and is an active participant in the provision of services without discrimination. And whereas members of the Salvation Army have befriended, aided, and given new hope to men, women, and children based on its Christian principles. And whereas in keeping with the mission of Roy and Joan Crock, the Salvation Army Crock Community Center in Salem, Oregon, pardon me, provides facilities, programs, and services that encourage positive living, offer life-changing experiences for adults and children, strengthens families, and enriches the lives of seniors. And whereas it is the appropriate time to highlight the Salvation Army Crock Community Center's many achievements and underscore its steadfast commitment to providing dignified services to those in need, now therefore I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May 14 to 20, 2018, as National Salvation Army Week and encourage all residents to thank the members of the Salvation Army for their ongoing service to our community dated this 14th day of May 2018.
And as we started our National Salvation Army Week today, we did it with Donut Day. And the Salvation Army, on June 1st, normally we celebrate Donut Day on June 1st, but because my wife and I will be out of town, we decided to start it off with our National Salvation Army Week. And we know that you were going to try and come to the Donut Day today to join us, and since you didn't make it, I brought you some donuts, which you can share with the rest of them or not. It's up to you. But I do want to...
At least the official donut.
Well, now you have some donuts to share with them, but thank you so much and for having us and for the proclamation.
I wasn't kidding, Hoy.
I don't eat donuts unless I'm blessed.
And Counselor Nanki, if you'd like to join me. I wanted to ask Maureen Focal to join us. She's here with her husband, Thomas. Thomas, if you'd like to come up as well. Maureen is joined by two students, Leah Ione from Lee Elementary and Madison Hall, who is graduating from West Salem High School. This is just a great opportunity. We're really happy to have you here, Maureen. This is recognition of Ms. Focal's induction into 2018 National Teachers Hall of Fame. It's a pretty, yeah. I believe Assistant Superintendent Kelly Carlisle, do you want to come up too, Kelly? And thank you all for joining us this evening. It was Ms. Focal's friend, Muriel Meyer, who's also in the audience. Muriel, is that you? Who sent an email to Counselor Nanki alerting him, hence Counselor Nanki is here. You want all the cast of characters here. Counselor Nanki alerting him to Ms. Focal's induction into the National Teachers Hall of Fame. And it is a uniquely distinctive award, as only five teachers nationally are inducted each year. Just a second here. Just to give some of you who don't know Ms. Focal a glimpse into what she's done, Ms. Focal's taught 2nd through 5th grade at Chapman Hill Elementary, that deserves applause, for more than 30 years. She also taught 3rd grade general education in the Salem-Kaiser School District and was an environmental elementary educator at Straub Environmental Center. She's currently volunteering at Lee Elementary School. Ms. Focal involved her students with community projects, partnering with city, state, and national agencies. And as a science teacher, she engaged countless students over the years through activity-based learning. Ms. Focal, well, speaking of a new generation, I'd like to now have Leah Ione from Lee Elementary say a couple of words about science projects.
So Leah didn't show, but we have Jisabelle instead.
Well, Jisabelle.
Jisabelle, will you do that for us?
Tell a little about what you...
Tell about your project in after-school science. What did you do?
We, uh, we did project, we did a project of, um, of per...
So you just tell them about your explorers.
Yeah. We, I forgot, what is it? We, um, we do, reduced the food and we made a project of reusing, like, we made a project of edible packaging and...
Oh. Well, that's kind of what we're talking about tonight.
Edible packaging, as opposed to...
Madison, can you talk a little about your experience as an environmental educator?
Well, Ms. Focal first got me involved in activities and allowed me the opportunity to meet my role model, Jane Goodall, twice. And we took 4th place in the Disney Challenge, even though we definitely should have won. And I also helped teach at the Straub Outdoor Center. And we also worked on the Save Our Salmon Project.
Excellent. Finally, Ms. Focal, in appreciation for your history teaching countless students in the Salem-Kaiser School District over the past three decades, myself and Counselor Nanki would like to present you with a certificate. And suitable for framing, it's a certificate of appreciation in recognition of more than 30 years of dedicated service as a teacher in the Salem-Kaiser School District and for challenging the minds of countless Salem-area students through activity-based learning. The city of Salem is grateful for your significant contributions to our community culminating in your award as a 2018 National Teacher Hall of Fame inductee dated this 14th May of June 2018. Congratulations. No?
No, because then she'd have to challenge you.
And then I'm going to say is, I'm glad I had this opportunity, but these are my superstars.
There they are.
These are my kids.
It's what it's all about, isn't it?
That's what it's all about.
Great. Thank you. And thank you all for being here this evening to honor Ms. Focal. Thank you so much. Human Rights and Relations Advisory Committee Annual Report, Danielle Meyer. There you are, Danielle.
Good evening. We are the Chair and Vice Chair of the City of Salem Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission, Danielle Meyer and...
Jackie Leung.
This commission was started in 1964 by Salem City Council in recognition that differences in race, ethnicity, religion, economic status, and other personal characteristics may give rise to tensions, practices of discrimination, and acts of prejudice in the city of Salem. We take direction, the Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission takes direction and inspiration from Chapter 97 of Salem Revised Codes, which states as "The policy of the city of Salem to eliminate discrimination and that the city intends that every individual shall have an equal opportunity to participate fully in the life of the city and the discriminatory barriers to equal participation in employment, housing, and public accommodations be removed." So in your packets for council and mayor, there is a staff report from Gretchen Bennett, and that report shows that we had 33 reports of discrimination in the last year. That is an increase over the previous year's total of 17. Through the years of commissioners at public outreach events, voices from public comment, and a survey done by Masters in Business Administration students at Willamette University, we've become, it's very clear to us that discrimination is underreported. There are many reasons people do not report discrimination. Most often is the fear of revictimization, retaliation, and unwanted public attention. It is common basis for not reporting. So to look into this underreporting, among other objectives, the Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission is focusing our work plan this year through three task forces and one program. Our core response team is continuing to prepare to be directly accessible to the people of Salem experiencing hate, bias, and discrimination. The core response team is also expanding its training to include all Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commissioners in training that better prepares the entire commission to listen to our community. Two, our awareness campaign task force is following up on the 2017 survey that Willamette University MBA students did to find ways to increase public awareness of this commission and to ensure that our resources are available to all who experience hate, bias, and discrimination. Three, the commission's LGBTQ rights task force is proud to have assisted Salem Police Department with in-service transgender interaction training this past January. This task force will again be at Capitol Pride in August and holding its second transgender day of remembrance in November. And four, we are looking forward to revitalizing our liaison program, and it still exists in our commission. We want to beef up this program. This is where we have the opportunity to be better connected to the diverse communities of Salem. Each commissioner that is a part of this program connects with organizations and events around specific communities and listens to those communities' needs and experiences, bringing back information for our commission to ensure that we are focusing on the needs of our community. Through these activities of the commission, we hope to be a well-informed and well-trained resource to all the people working, living, and enjoying the city of Salem, and we are happy to be of service to city council and the mayor. And I would like to finish with just a little bit of pride in our efforts, that the National Human Rights Campaign ranked Salem best in the state of Oregon this year in their Municipal Equality Index with a score of 90. That is two points better than Portland and Eugene. We scored higher thanks to bonus points that were awarded to us for having a direct connection between the Salem Police Department, working with the Human Rights Commission, and our core response team. That's a very nice recognition of the city's efforts. Thank you for the opportunity to share this with you all tonight.
Thank you, Danielle. And just you guys, you and Jackie and your entire commission do just an outstanding job, and we can't thank you enough. This is a very important, timely, and difficult task, and you do it with really great grace and understanding in dealing with folks who come to you. So I really appreciate, I hear fairly often from people who've been to the commission and how pleased they are with the experience they have. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate it. Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Annual Report presented by Cassia Quillinen.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. I am once again the Chair of the Salem Parks and Recreation Board. But with me tonight, we have, in the audience, we have Woody Dukes, Bill Fuji, Carol Snyder, and Patty Tipton, also members of the Straub Board. They could raise their hands or jump up and down or something.
Stand up, Woody.
Stand up and be recognized.
Everybody stand up.
There we go.
Come on. Thank you very much.
Well, it's been our usual sort of more or less eventful year. We've done enormous numbers of things. I would like to point out, however, we do say that we manage about 105,000 street trees and 30,000 park trees. That number actually is going up by a lot because we keep doing tree plantings in various places, particularly Minto and McKay Park this year. But we don't know how far it's gone up, so we started a tree survey, and that just started last week, I think. So we will know soon how many trees we have and what kind of trees we have. We met this year at the Art Barn in Bush's Pastor Park. That was kind of fun at the request of the Salem Art Association's Director. We thought that it would be good to get out of our normal digs, so we went over there to see what was going on. That was fun. We had a couple of new things that we did this year. Last, a couple of years ago, we did the Pump Track. That was a volunteer project, put that together. That's doing just fine. This year, it was, been awarded a SPIF grant to help, I guess, improve it or work on some issues that they had out there. But this year, we had something that was truly phenomenal, which was the ice skating rink, and I know many of you participated in that. I, on the other hand, was so busy, I didn't even have a chance to get my ice skates out of the basement that I've had since I was 14.
Count your blessings.
So, so, next year, I, next year, I'm going ice skating. That's it. So, other than that, we've removed a bunch of invasive species. We've got some ludwiga efforts that are going to be starting soon. We get to get rid of those. Anglewood has a volunteer project going to remove invasive species. And of course, we participated in the Peter Courtney grand opening of the Minto Bridge, and everybody in the world was there that day, I think. I'm not sure anybody wasn't there. So, in general, we continue to do what we're supposed to be doing, which is try to implement as many possible parks as, develop as many parks as possible and support our recreation programs and services. The recreation programs, we had a report on that recently, are going great guns, particularly our women's softball tournaments. I think there's something like 49 of them that are organized for this summer. It's a huge number. And of course, that, all those sports activities do bring in a lot of money to the city of Salem. We tend to continue to review and respond to proposed land use decisions that might affect the parks. And we are going to hopefully be developing more walking trails at various places like Wallace Marine Park and perhaps this River Corridor project going from Riverfront Park down to Bush Park. We hope that that comes to fruition pretty soon. So, it's more of the same. We just go on forever trying to build as many little parks and large parks as we possibly can, and we hope that you all will continue to give us enough money to be able to do that. And that's all I have to say, in case we all be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Cassia, again, for all the work you and the Recreation, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board do, particularly taking on the tree management issue and also realizing we've got master planning going on, we're adding new property. You all are busy, and we just can't thank you enough.
Right. And I did forget to mention that to date, we have not had any tree appeals, so I can't tell you about that because we haven't had one. So, I guess...
Well, wait till that sidewalk stuff starts. That'll...
Yes. I'll be happy to talk about that next time that comes up.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, it's time for public comment. Debbie Miller. I would remind you, as Debbie's coming up, you have three minutes. At the end of three minutes, at two minutes, the yellow light comes on. At three minutes, just stop talking, and we'll ask your questions.
We need to keep it very short.
Excellent. Thank you, Debbie.
My name is Debbie Miller. I'm a practicing physician here in Salem. I am an organizer for the March for Science for the last couple of years also, and we decided to support the effort to ban single-use plastic bags in Salem this year. We do this because we feel it's an important step towards controlling the alarming amount of plastic waste building up in our community and worldwide. At the current rate of use, within the next couple of decades, the amount of plastic waste in our ocean will exceed the number of fish. Plastic material from these bags has entered our food chain, as the bags do not degrade but break down into small, potentially toxic pieces of plastic that are being consumed by fish, domestic animals, as well as wildlife. Currently, there are between 46,000 and 1 million plastic fragments floating within every square mile of our ocean. Plastic bags have been successfully banned or highly taxed in several countries worldwide, as well as in numerous cities across the United States, including five in our own state. That... That is Portland, Eugene, Corvallis, McMinnville, and Manzanita. I'd like to see all those here today who support the ban on single-use plastic bags in Salem, please stand and support at this time. Thank you. We'd like to see us move forward.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Ken Beerly.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Ken Beerly. I'm from Ward Eight, the same ward that Maureen Focal came from. She was, I couldn't say enough good things about her and her students and the wonderful job they did at Chapman Hill Elementary School. She will be dearly missed, but she's also helping out in the community in environmental education. I'm speaking today on the Salem Flood Plane Management Plan. I've provided each of you with a letter that was written for the, prior to the comment period, and I'd like to thank the Public Works Department because they were able to and willing to make a presentation to the Glen Gibson Creek Watershed Council at our last meeting. Glenn Davis went above and beyond call of duty to attend a family business and then show up at our meeting and answer questions. It was very helpful in building an understanding of how this plan will affect our community. The plan is clear. It achieves the objective as the Public Works Department, helps Salem residents better address flood impacts. Salem should be proud of their ability to meet FEMA requirements and reduce risks to the public. However, reading the plan, there were a couple of things that occurred to me. One is the relationship of the flood plane to the Willamette River Greenway Plan. The Willamette Greenway Plan was adopted in 1978. I doubt if it has been reviewed since then. It's a 40-year-old vision for the relationship between the Willamette River and the city of Salem, and it needs to be brought into the present time. The acquisition of Minto Island, the completion of the Peter Courtney Bridge, New Amphitheater Riverfront Park, these are all brand-new visions of how that relationship should occur. And I think that the Willamette River Greenway Plan needs to be updated with the new uses of the riverfront and new understanding of the function of the Willamette River as a regional ecosystem. The second issue, I think, is that the plan, while it mentions the settlement agreement between the Federal Emergency Management Agency and National Marine Fisheries Service over the effects of flood plane management on endangered species, anadromous fish species in Oregon, was mentioned. There are specific implementation steps that were mandated under the biological opinion that went into effect in March of this year, and a forward-thinking plan would have included those in the plan. And I could understand why it might not have been in this plan, but it is something that should be considered because there will be changes in the requirements for flood plane development. And as I see the light blinking...
Stop blinking, you're old.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I'd be glad to answer questions.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Mr. Beerly, and thank you for all the service you provided. You mentioned the Willamette Greenway Plan, and I see that because your group mentioned this, that there was a brief analysis included in the flood plane report. Are you saying you would like to, independently of that, see some review of the Greenway Plan itself?
I think it is far past time for the city of Salem to update that plan, to develop with the citizens of Salem what the current vision of that relationship is.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Few of us operate under the 1978 view of the world.
What?
Some of us do.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ken Lyons.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Bennett. City Councilor, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Ken Lyons. I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T. I just wanted to speak in favor of Agenda Item 7 dot 1C, which is Ordinance Bill Number 7-18. We really appreciate the efforts, all the efforts, particularly in leadership of city staff, particularly Brian Zink, for all the effort that has gone in to prepare these right-of-way agreements that are before you tonight, at least for first reading, and we appreciate your consideration of that. Just a note of clarification, AT&amp;T's entity name in Oregon is New Singular Wireless PCS. That's why it shows up as New Singular Wireless, but it's AT&amp;T is providing wireless services to the Salem community. And then I'll just be very, very brief. We've witnessed really a wholesale change in the way that people communicate in this day and age. Fully two-thirds of Oregon residents don't have a home phone anymore. They rely on wireless exclusively for their ways of communicating. We've, on AT&amp;T's network, we've had a 250,000 percent increase in data traffic since 2007, which you might recognize as the advent of the iPhone and other smartphones, and it's created tremendous strain on the network. And that's why we're looking at technology like small cells, because it really is the architecture for 5G. It's how we deploy fiber throughout the community as well as, and wirelessly be able to connect to people as they're increasingly becoming more and more dependent on wireless facilities. And keep in mind, it's amazing that we were really, pretty much, a landline society for 100 years, and we've rapidly gone wireless in the last 15 or so. But anyways, these small cells, we are looking forward to deploying, both as the architecture for 5G, but also to relieve the capacity and constraints we have here to serve the community, and we appreciate your consideration of it. I will, of course, be here and have to answer any questions later if needed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thomas Ellis.
In the interest of your time, I would defer to Counselor Anderson's request that we...
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Danielle Meyer.
You already did, okay.
Jackie did it too.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Rachel Fenton.
My name's Rachel Fenton. I'm here on behalf of Mobility. Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and Council, for allowing me to speak. Just wanted to take a moment to let you know who I was and that I was here representing Mobility in a very similar project to what my colleague, Ken Lyons, just spoke about. Our deployment is aimed at the exact same thing that AT&amp;T is doing, only on behalf of Sprint. I'd like to thank staff for all the help that they've given us in getting us this far, along with wanting to let you know it's been an absolute pleasure working with Ryan Zink. He's been wonderful. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. And Galen McAllister.
I'm the Resource Development Manager at Garten Services, and I'm here tonight to thank you for considering the Community Development Block Grant Plan that's being presented to you this evening. Garten has benefited since 2013. You've supported equipment purchases that have kept people working at our facility and added to employment there. So it's been a wonderful partnership, and we look forward to continuing it. I know recycling's a lot in the news, and materials management is one of your topics tonight, and I really appreciate how you're considering how we, as a community, can make things work better. And also, anything you can do to get plastic bags out of your blue bins, that would really help us. It wrecks our machinery. It keeps people from being able to focus on the things that are recyclable. Just removing those bags takes a lot of effort from us, and it wrecks a lot of our machinery. So we appreciate anything you can do to keep it out of there.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion for me then? We'll move on. That's the end of public comment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we move Item 5C to, on the agenda in front of the consent calendar.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the council direct staff to research and prepare an ordinance to ban single-use plastic bags in the city of Salem, including consideration of a pass-through fee and an exemption for safeguarding public health and farmers' markets, to be scheduled for a public hearing before council.
Second.
Second by Hoi. Okay. Any discussion?
I just have some very brief discussion, Mr. Mayor. I included a four-page memorandum in the council packet, so I don't really need to go into all that. I would like to acknowledge that this was, I got a lot of help in the research through this from Shelby Smith, who was a third-year law student at Willamette University and was very helpful here. I finally want to say, the only other thing I want to say is that someone was talking about in the public, I think it was Dr. Miller, was there other ways to deal with the issue of plastic bags? And I'm just holding up another way. This is a cellulose shopping bag from the Himalayan mountain country of Bhutan, and that's all they have. They don't have plastics, and these are biodegradable. So there's just other ways we can look at this issue other than single-use plastic bags. I urge that we vote to pass this and move it on for full consideration by the council after staff report.
Okay. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And being the data-driven type of guy I am, I pulled up some life cycle assessments on all different kinds of shopping bags, and I would encourage everyone to do a search on life cycle assessment for single-use plastic bags. The material is a byproduct from natural gas production, so it's essentially free and would have to go to waste somewhere. The numbers, based on the other types of bags to replace that, increase the amount of greenhouse gases, increase the amount of solid waste, increase the usage of water by significant margin. So I would encourage everyone to read up on that. I will be providing that to staff to incorporate into a public hearing, but I will be voting no on the motion on the floor.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. No, Nanki. Okay. Consent calendar. I'm gonna take a couple-minute break and let those who'd like to leave, leave. There'll be no more clapping tonight, so if you're gonna hear for the applause, it's over. Okay, we'll come back to order. Counselor McCoy, the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
Okay. We've got a large consent calendar this evening. The minutes of the April 23rd council minutes are involved under resolutions. We have a resolution to adopt updating the city of Salem Flood Plane Management Plan. This is required every five years by FEMA. That's what that is right now. Waiving, 32B is a resolution waiving certain sections and provisions of Salem Revised Code, Chapter 43, Cable Communications Franchise Code. We need to do that because a new franchise agreement has been negotiated, and part of that requirement was changing the code to match the agreement. Under Action Items, we've got authorized a city manager to execute the termination agreement with Harry Lovell Hair Care Center for leased space located at 310 Commercial Street Northeast. We've got authorized a city manager to execute the downtown housing parking reservation agreement for use by owners of new and existing residential properties in the downtown core to satisfy the parking requirements in the Salem Revised Code. 33C, under Action Items, is authorizing the city manager to execute the attached purchase and sale agreement with Hazel Green LLC for the acquisition of real property for use as a community park. 33D is authorizing the city manager to execute the attached intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for right-of-way services for the McGill Chris Street Southeast, 12th Street to 25th Street Corridor Improvement Project. 33E is to authorize the city manager to sign the mutual aid agreement between the city of Salem and the other ambulance service providers in Marion and adjoining counties retroactive to January 1st of this year through December 31st of 2023. And finally, 33F is city council authorized the city manager to execute an attached IGA agreement with the Salem Kaiser School District to monitor Gilmore Field water levels during flood planes. That's a mouthful. And that is the consent calendar.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We will move on then to public hearings. I'm going to change the order on these. We have a witness who'll be here in just a few minutes, so I'm gonna just switch him around here. So we're gonna start with 4B, which is the 2018-19 Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan.
Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding the 2018-2019 Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan. The hearing will be conducted with a staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. The yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Who is going to be the...
So, hello, Councilors. My name is Adam Kohler, and I'm the Chair of the Community Services and Housing Commission. With us in the audience, I have Kim Lemon, who's my vice chair, and Jane Downing, who's a member of our commission as well. I just wanted to start off with a couple of brief comments about our process and basically how our commission works. Essentially, we meet once a month to discuss issues and to make sure that our applications are perfected, and then in the early January timeframe, we go through a brutal process where we review each and every application in a very complicated funding cycle. The months of January, February, and March are very busy. We spend a lot of time going through these applications and making sure that the organizations have an opportunity to present their case, and then we work with the staff, come up with our funding recommendations. So I am here in support of staff's report on the annual action plan, and also to answer any questions after that, if you have any questions, as is Kim. I wanted to note that after we made our funding recommendation, there were some additional funds that were found, and Shelley will address those in her presentation. But along those lines, there is about $190,000 of funds that have not been allocated yet, and Kim and I support the decision to have the Community Services and Housing Commission review those funds next month and then present those to you in a supplemental information or addendum, I guess you could say. Shelley will explain more to that in a second. And before I cede my mic, cede the mic over to Shelley, I just wanted to take a second to thank her and Sal and staff for their great support in putting together this action plan. It is very complicated. There have been a lot of questions from the community and from the members of the commission, and staff has been, has done a very excellent job, in my opinion, of coming to us with those answers and meeting our needs. And so with that, I will hand over your time.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, Council. I'm Shelley Ahinger, Federal Programs Manager, working under the Urban Development Department with the wonderful leadership of Kristin Rutherford.
Oh.
The purpose of tonight's, the purpose of tonight's public meeting, hearing, is to provide an opportunity for the public to hear and comment on the proposed 2018-19 Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Program Partnership Annual Action Plan. And I know that's a mouthful, but I want to say to you and to the public, it is the federal resources that we receive to provide housing and supportive services here in the city of Salem and for the home program in the city of Kaiser. The plan addresses many funding goals and priorities that have been identified in a 2015-2019 consolidated plan, along with consideration to the city's recently approved strategic plan. The annual plan itself represents the past four years. We will be in the process of updating the annual plan, I'm sorry, the consolidated plan, but in the meantime, we're using it as part of the benchmark. We also are looking at other benchmarks, including, once again, the city's consolidated, I'm sorry, strategic plan that you just finished doing, which talks about increasing affordable housing options, improving coordination of social services, and reducing the number of the hardest-to-house chronically homeless in the community. The annual plan outreach consisted of contact with several social services organizations, attendance at an array of community meetings, published notices, website publications, and a notice on the city's Facebook page. The annual plan is not done in a vacuum. Community-driven efforts start at all times, and so we have to make sure that we are able to meet those... to meet those needs as they occur. The Mid-Willamette Valley Homeless Initiative identified the City of Salem as the lead in addressing several performance measurements. They include SDC waivers for affordable housing projects owned by nonprofits, and support for a sobering and day resource center. There's the Continuum of Care Plan, and that's where the other federal monies come in, through the Continuum of Care. There's McKinney veto federal funding for emergency and transitional housing, and we want to always be a partner with them as well. There are urban renewal plans that are part of the Urban Development Department, and so we work with them in the riverfront downtown, West Salem, and North Gateway URAs. As Adam had mentioned, we started this process last November, six months ago. We started the process with applications being submitted by individual community partners. The city does not provide direct services as it relates to these resources. We depend on community partners, and we have several here today who are here to make sure that you know that they appreciate the work that you do as they get these additional funds. In December, the notice was published in the Statesman Journal, minority publications, and a press release issued. City staff attended meetings in different places, including the NAACP meeting, the Salem, I'm sorry, Salem-Kaiser NAACP meeting, Emergency Housing Network, and the North Salem Service Integration Team to get the information out to the community. All applications were forwarded, and this year, we're pleased to say we had 26 total applications received, and it's just a small increase, but we know that the need is great, and we know that these service providers are there to assist us through this process. The proposed projects that are in this plan will provide assistance to approximately 50,000 individuals and families within Salem and Kaiser. These projects are specifically designed to assist low-to-moderate-income communities, those that are most vulnerable. We are required to provide an environmental review for each of the projects, as well as enter into grant agreements and/or contracts once federal funding has been received by the city. This is, once again, the chart showing you how much funding was requested this year. For home, our 26 applications had $1.9 million of requests. For CDBG, there was $2.8 million in request. And for general fund, which is targeted towards public services, there were $430,000 worth of requests. Now we get to the available resources, now that you've seen the requests. And of course, you always have more requests than you have available funds. And the federal funds were announced to us just last week, and so we have been spending a couple of days trying to make sure that our numbers match what the federal allocation is, and that's where Adam was speaking in regards to the home funds, that we now have $190,000 more than what was anticipated. When we anticipate these resources, we use the previous year as the benchmark, and we're pleased to say that this year, we're getting 212,000 more in home, as well as additional funding in CDBG. There is a 20% cap for administrative expenses with CDBG, and a 10% cap for home. So when you look at these numbers, you'll see the entitlement part, that's what we get from the federal government. Program income is monies we receive from projects from years past. There may have been home loans that individuals are paying us back for and/or other program income. And then the uncommitted prior-year allocation are resources from projects that were funded that, for other reasons, was not able to get off the ground, or there were some cost savings because they estimate how much they will need when they come to us, and we do it on a reimbursement plan, so therefore, they're not getting the monies more than what is needed for that project. In addition to that, you do not see the $400,000 that you, as a council, have awarded towards general services. We use that as match funds. Under the CDBG program, we're required to do 25% match, and so this is the city's contribution that we count as a match, and each of our grantees are also required to put in a 25% Under the home program this year, we have several that we're recommending be accepted for funding. New multifamily housing, construction, or rehabilitation is the bulk of what we're asking under the home resources. The balance of funding will allow, the balance of funding will allow the Salem Housing Authority to assist citizens in Salem and Kaiser with security deposit support for up to 118 households. In addition to that, Family Promise of Mid-Willamette Valley, formerly the Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network, will provide monthly rental assistance under the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. This support will ensure that homeless families with children have a safe place to sleep at night. Again, you can see that the request was for $1.9 million, and that we had anticipated $1.1 million in total resources. That's the 191,000 that we had discussed earlier, and the Community Services and Housing Commission will be discussing the use of these resources at their June 13th meeting with recommendations, recommendations to present it to the council at a later date. Under the CDBG program, we have two separate allocations. One is for economic development, housing, and public facilities. The CDBG projects that we're proposing are merit and interface. They will be doing micro-enterprise programs to help develop, train, and provide 101 counseling with new and existing small businesses. Vocational training will be provided by Marion Polk Food Share. This is a new program that was seeking funding this year. It is designed to assist 40 trainees with work experience, career development training, and job search skills building, and this is something some of the employers have been telling us is lacking when they go out to find employees, some of the basic skills training. Garten, as Galen said earlier today, would like to purchase a needed piece of equipment to improve the air quality and climate at the recycling center. Recycling production has increased, and this has resulted in an increase in dust particles, which then impact the plant environment. With improved air quality, existing shifts can run a little longer, and new workers can be hired. And then finally, but always important, the Salem Housing Authority would leverage both CDBG and home funding with state and private resources to finance affordable housing for low-to-moderate-income individuals on the former, former Euquina Hall site located on Center Street. Mid-Willamette Valley Community Action submitted an application to renovate their facility to incorporate expanded services at the Day Resource Center. Enhanced services will include laundry, showers, lockers, clothing closets, client computers, and other enriched services for unsheltered individuals. In these categories, the amount requested was over a million of what we have available, but these were the ones, and that's some of those tough decisions that Adam was referencing in his opening comments. Under general fund, this is the social service priorities that we received to help provide safety net, emergency services to homeless and people at risk of homelessness. The programs proposed follow this criteria. This criteria was set out several years ago by the council, and it helps leverage against the CDBG grant. The Community Services and Housing Commission made social service funding recommendations based upon what you see in front of you. Here are the proposed general fund programs. The programs are designed to assist the most vulnerable populations in our community. Homeless case management for families living at St. Francis Shelter. To purchase an estimated 805,000 pounds of food for the emergency food supply. This will support the food resource developer position for Salem-specific food purchase activities, and coordinate food donations from farmers, food processors, and community food drives. Northwest Human Services will provide crisis intervention and referral services for emotional, emergency, rent, and utility assistance via the crisis hotline, as well as provide case management at their home homeless youth center. Congregations Helping People will assist in one-time utility assistance and case management. This effort is designed to prevent homelessness. And Home Youth Resources with the Mid-Willamette Valley Community Action Agency will provide partial support for staff case management for weekends and holiday services. Next steps. Counsel, after you have the opportunity to review, amend, and approve the proposed plan, the plan will be submitted to HUD. We have to have it to HUD by June 15th. The projects will then be included in the city's budget, and once again, contractual agreements with subrecipients will be executed so that we can begin the programs no later than July 30. Comments and responses received during this public hearing will be included in the final submission to HUD. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question. On those additional funds you received, how are those, where are those going at this point? Can you...
When the Community Services and Housing Commission met, HUD had provided us guidance in case we got less funding or more funding.
Right.
And what, and in this occasion, since we got more funding, the CSHC had asked us to provide the additional resources up to the amount requested or asked for by those entities. And then there was some resources remaining, and we took the top-scoring entity that was remaining, and that's where that $26,000 that was remaining went.
And that is?
Women at the Well.
Okay. And also, will you be looking at that 190? Will the commission be looking, then, at allocating it to other programs? Is that how that'll work, too? I noticed Mid-Willamette Valley Community Action Agency had requests, and how will that, how's that done?
So that will be one of the, it'll be a fun meeting in June. To be honest, we, these are tough meetings, they really are, and we're making emotional decisions that are impacting people's lives, and so every time we're done, we're grateful. So to have more money is a blessing, but it's also going to be a challenge, because there are a couple of programs out there that are, that are in consideration. The way that it works with our commission is that we score all of our grants, but we use that as a, as a starting point for our conversation. And for example, there was, for the general funds, we awarded $400,000 with an ask of $436,000, I believe, was, was the difference there, and we tiered it based on the scoring. So the top-scoring one got, was fully funded, and the lower-scoring ones had a little bit, a little bit of a haircut on it. We will have to evaluate that and see if that still holds true for the additional $190,000, because there was a program that wasn't fully funded, that could be fully funded, or Mid-Willamette Valley Community Action Agency could be funded, but that's, to be honest, we have to go back and look at where our scores were, look at the comments of the commissioners and...
Well, I appreciate you funding Women at the Well. I know they've been in a couple of times and have come very, very close. I'm pleased to see that they were able to be funded this time.
Absolutely. That was, that was great to hear that, even though it was via email for us, but no, the recommendation to fund them was, was well-received, and we supported that.
Good. I think that's a good, good call. Look forward to your future visit with us on this.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments? Okay. I move, this, public hearing. Do I have anybody? Nope. You want to testify?
No, I don't, but I was waiting on my comments until after the public hearing or questions.
There are, I'm sorry, I'm sitting here knowing all this secret stuff.
Well, you always know more than I do, Mayor.
There is no public comment.
I think the mayor asked the question, and that is, there were, the two things that I noticed were the tenant-based rental assistance and the MWVCAA, and those are the ones with the extra money. You're gonna go back and look at the ones that were zeroed out, or will you look at some of the ones that got 80% of their requests or something else? How you gonna look, look at that?
It'll, it'll be a combination of all that.
Okay, great, great, great. That's very good. And one other one, we just got tonight a series of comments on this issue, several pages from a public member, a public person who's interested in this named Sarah Owens, and I haven't had a chance to look at it or reply to it, but I'm seeing that the director is, the wonderful director is, is nodding her head because you said that the responses to what happened tonight will be included in your final draft to HUD, so I presume there will be some response to the issues that were raised by Ms. Owens.
So already in the packet and included in the draft for HUD are responses to comments. The materials that you have before you tonight, I believe, include some introductory comments from her, kind of setting the stage, but in the annual action plan, each particular comment to, for specific pages or verbiage, that's already in the plan with responses from staff.
So there's nothing really new in what we, as the council, saw tonight, that you haven't already seen in preparing this?
I do not believe so, but we're going to go back and revisit that for the final submission.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I appreciate the report, too.
Counsel Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just out of an abundance of caution, I need to declare a potential conflict. I am on the advisory council for the Center for Hope and Safety. It's an unpaid position, advisory in nature. I don't think it creates a conflict, but I do want to just declare it out there.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll move the staff recommendation. Second by McCoy. I think that, you know, you heard the, you heard the discussion, you saw the numbers. This is an extremely hard-working board, takes its job very seriously. I think they've done a great job. We will be revisiting their objectives over the next year or so, to be looking at how we're going to help align them better with the strategic plan. I think they've done a remarkable job of aligning themselves with our strategic plan, so I hope you'll support the motion. For our discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Yes, here we go. I'm gonna open a public hearing, 18-197. The recorder would take us through it.
The council will now hold a public hearing regarding the vacation of Vacation Lane Southeast. The criteria applicable to the proposed amendment are ORS 271-080 through 271-230 and SRC 255-065. Testimony must be directed towards the identified criteria or other criteria the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. The hearing will be conducted with the staff presentation first, followed by the applicant, who is limited to 10 minutes; the neighborhood association, limited to five minutes; then other interested persons, who are limited to three minutes per person. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
And then I'll just correct the record. That's 18-193. Yeah. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Gamallo, and I am a senior transportation planner with the Public Works Department. I'd like to enter the staff report into the record. This is a public hearing to consider a petition initiated vacation of Vacation Lane Southeast, submitted by Matthew and Suzanne Bailey of 710 Whining Way Southeast. Vacation Lane Southeast is unapproved and currently functions as a private driveway for an existing dwelling. This right-of-way vacation would allow for the creation of a more efficient access alignment. Please note that there is a discrepancy in the total square footage of the proposed vacation due to a correction in the legal description. The packet that you have shows a total square footage of 19,353 square feet. The correct square footage of the proposed vacation is 21,247 square feet. We caught the discrepancy today, and we'll make the appropriate changes to the record going forward. So staff recommends council approve the petition of Vacation Lane Southeast, subject to two, to the two following conditions. The first is reconfiguration of the lots in such a way as to ensure that all lots The first is reconfiguration of the lots in such a way as to ensure that all lots have adequate access to a public street. As you can see here, that's the, the total area. The amber portion is the proposed vacation. The three lots shaded in red would be cut off from access to a public street. So staff recommends that approval of the vacation be conditional on a reconfiguration of these lots, in such a way as to ensure that all lots have adequate access to a public street. The second condition concerns an assessment of special benefit to be paid to the city by the petitioner in exchange for the vacated property. The Real Property Services Division of the Urban Development Department estimates the value of the property to be vacated at $40,369.30. Again, this is based on the corrected total square footage of the vacation, and that will, that change will be made going forward. To summarize, staff recommends that council approve the petition to vacate Vacation Lane subject to a reconfiguration of the existing lots and the payment of the assessment of special benefit in the amount of $40,369.30. This concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have, though my understanding is we have members of the public that would like to testify.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll hold our questions then for you. First, Joey Shear.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name's Joey Shear. I'm a planner with AKS Engineering, consultant for the petitioners Matthew and Suzanne Bailey, 4300 Cherry Avenue Northeast, Kaiser 97303. And I'd just like to begin by thanking you for your time this evening. I also want to thank staff for their, their time working with us on this project. I'm not gonna use much of my time here. I just would say that we agree with the findings and the, the conditions in the staff report. We feel that the, the criteria for the approval of the petition for the vacation are all met, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Shear. Your clients, do they own the three polka dot lots?
They do. They, so the, the petitioners own 100% of the land that abuts the, the right-of-way.
Okay. So that means the lots above the polka dot going up to Winding Way, they own those as well?
Correct. It's, it's a tract of like 10 old subdivision lots and the big lot of record there in the middle.
And so I think now you can, my next question will be answered. If they own the lots below and right to the curve there, that's where the access is going to be, and that's going to be onto commercial? Or how, how are you gonna get access out of there?
No, so the, the conversation, we've had conversations with Public Works and Planning for some time on this piece of property, and trying to find a way to make access work efficiently and safely. Our understanding is that access onto commercial is not gonna be permitted.
No, that's, makes sense.
So what, what we're trying to do is ascertain whether we are tied to this existing access, which presents some challenges, or if there's a, a way for us to have some flexibility to basically wipe the slate clean and create an access that functions at a higher level, hopefully is more efficient, and hopefully more, more safe as well.
Basically, it looks to my untrained eye that it's going to have to go north to Winding Way?
I mean, there's a couple of different options.
Okay. And you're discussing that with staff?
Yeah.
And you're confident you can find some way to achieve that goal, or that condition?
Absolutely, yeah. We wouldn't be here tonight if we weren't.
Any further questions? Great. Thank you very much. Hal Evenson.
Everybody calls me Hal, but my name is Harold Evenson, and I'm glad to have a chance to talk to you folks tonight. Before I get into what I came to say, I'd like to thank the people for recognizing us folks that signed up for military when we weren't sure what we were signing up for back in the 60s. Anyway, thank you. What I'm concerned about here is that there is not enough specificity in the plans to go forward with something after the vacation occurs, so that we know what's involved. It's kinda like somebody coming to you if you were the parks director and saying, you know what we'd like to do, is we'd like to vacate the parking lot to the softball diamond down here by Willamette University. And you'd say, well, what are you gonna do with it? And they'd say, well, we aren't sure yet, but we'd like to have it vacated so that we can think about it. And that's where we're at right now on this thing. They don't know what they want to do with the property. And I'll show you where I live. If you look at that, if you look at that red mark with the two parallel red lines, my property is on the lower left, butts up against that property. That's where I live. And what I'm concerned about, about my neighborhood is, for one thing, right now we have a terrible traffic crisis because of the Charles Schwab people and other folks with the First Tech Credit Union that are coming in and out of that driveway, onto Winding Way, when people are trying to get off of commercial, onto Winding Way, and not realizing there's a car sitting out there blocked by the traffic going out, and there's not a step, a traffic signal there. And, and when there's been other things developed for this property, one of the things was the city's traffic management said, we don't plan to have a light there. So what I'm saying is, we're putting the cart before the horse if you approve this without some further parts of the plan that are going to be done. It would be, like I said, like I would say to you, how about I, how about I vacate the parking lot and don't know what I'm gonna do with it yet? Come on. You'd say, hey, Hal, what are you smoking? Thank you very much.
Any questions for Hal? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, any questions for staff? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question in relation to the driveways that Hal mentioned on the north side of Winding And also just with the tree line. It looks like vacation's coming in, but there will still be some greenery, and I know there's quite a slope difference as well. Hearing the testimony, we've just heard, what are the options, or what are staff thinking about making sure? I know both Winding and Welcome do tend to be cut-throughs, because there's such a lot of residential neighborhoods in there. Do staff have any strategies that they're looking at?
Personally, I, I worked on the vacation aspect of this itself, so I can speak to the, the access to the property in question. In terms of any other larger plans, I can't speak to that. That's not part of this report or in my purview.
Okay. Thanks, Anthony. No worries.
At what point, then, would the neighborhood have a chance to see what's planned here? To Mr. Evenson's, I'm not sure, I just wanna make sure, I, I understand there's a sequence. When would they get a chance to have a look at what's planned here?
So Norman Wright, Community Development Director, we have had some initial conversations about proposed developments for this site, and so I don't know if there's necessarily a timeline that's been established yet, but I would ask for Deputy Director Lisa Anderson Olgoby to give any insights that she has.
Well, Lisa, what I'm thinking is, what are the steps going forward, and particularly where Mr. Evenson's questions get answered along the way?
Sure. Good evening, Lisa Anderson Olgoby. Well, they haven't applied for any applications for development, so I think perhaps Joey could speak to what their client's plans are, but at some point when they apply for an application, we will send notice to everybody within 250 feet and the neighborhood association, and you'll be able to see what they're proposing, whether it's a zone change, a subdivision, site plan review, whatever they're proposing, and it will show where the access is going to be. And so there'll be a time for people to review it then. I don't know what the application's going to be, so I can't speak to whether it's gonna be a public hearing, or if it would just be something that staff would review, but there will be notice regardless of what type of application we see coming forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And didn't I read that we're doing bicycle improvements on that section of commercial? Does it go further south on commercial for extra widening of the bike lane that's there?
I believe the commercial vista corridor plan you're speaking to?
Not, no, that's further north.
That's further north.
Right, 'cause the bike lane finishes right up near the veterinary clinic right now, but I thought that I saw we were extending that further. No?
Not that I know of. I will say, future development of the site would have frontage improvements.
Including sidewalk? Everything up to par?
Including sidewalk, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This also for you, Lisa. So as I understand this planning process, if the developer and the staff and whatever public hearing there may or may not need to be, if they can't figure out a way how to get access onto Winding Way, this development cannot go forward.
They will need to figure out access, yes, whether it's to the north or the south or both. Yes.
Right. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And that access will be subject to review by staff?
Yes.
Council?
It depends on their application and how they combine their applications together. So for example, if it's a subdivision, that's approved at the administrative level and could be appealed to the planning commission or called up to council.
Okay.
If it's something different, like site plan review, it could be appealed to the hearings officer.
And again, subject to council call-up?
If it's appealed, it could be called up by council, site plan review. Again, I think they're considering all different options, so I can't speak to what they're actually proposing, so I don't know which type of applications to say you're going to need at this point.
Sure, sure. And if I may, the vacation does not get recorded until that access issue has been solved.
Ah.
Yes, that is a condition.
And the two conditions that I spoke about, first, the access issue, second, the assessment of special benefit.
Counselor Nanki.
Thanks. And I admit, with a, a lot of the neighbors surrounding this property a few years back when there was another possible use taking place, and that access is truly awful, and so pulling that inside to give the property owner access from a different location, I think would be of extreme benefit to people. It's sitting right on the intersection to commercial, and it's, it's previous use was kind of okay with that. If, if that's gonna be developed into, to something else, we really need to reconfigure that. And by pushing forward, you know, this vacation, it gives them control of everything inside of their block, so...
What is its previous use? What was it?
A, a large home.
Oh, okay.
With a lot of property around it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the large lot around here.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, would the applicant like to have a rebuttal?
So I will just quickly affirm what you've heard from staff, that first of all, we have, there's some long history to this, this property. Most recently, we have presented a, a concept to the neighborhood association that, that showed actually some commercial development along the frontage of commercial and a small four or five lot subdivision. We're not sure if we're going to move forward with that concept, but piggybacking on what staff said, anything that we're talking about is either gonna require a subdivision, a zone change, site plan review, something like that, that will require continued engagement, both with the public through the city noticing requirements, as well as city staff and potentially planning commission, and potentially all of you again. So unless there's any other questions.
Very good. Counselor Nanki.
I'd just like to thank you for getting with the neighborhood association. Fay Wright and I have conflicting meetings, so I can't attend theirs, but I know it's very important to all the neighborhoods in, in town that when people are looking at potential future uses of property, that they're involved with that, and so I commend you for that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Counselor Nanki.
I would move staff recommendation as amended by the, the change in square footage and, and property valuation.
Second by McCoy. Discussion. All those in, no? Yes? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. And we'll move on to special orders of business. Yay. 5A, we're gonna be deliberating the formation of the Lone Oak Road reimbursement district. Where'd we leave off? Staff, asking staff questions. What are we gonna do here? Okay, Public Works has a short presentation to bring us up to speed, or what are we gonna do here?
We did.
Do we have an announcement?
Was that it?
No.
Oh.
Very good.
Sorry.
I'm on?
No.
Oh, you're, you're on, but your screen's not.
Okay, there we go.
So good evening, Mayor Bennett and Councilors. My name is Glenn Davis. I'm the chief development engineer in the Public Works Department. I'll be providing a brief reminder of, of this reimbursement district process, and then I'll offer a few additional alternatives for the council consideration. So on the screen is a list of a few of the key dates related to this, to Lone Oak Road and this reimbursement district. In June of last year, staff brought an information report to council regarding possible solutions for Lone Oak construction by Creekside. And then two months later, staff received an application for reimbursement district from the Burnt family, who are the owners of a proposed Oak Ridge subdivision development. And then in January of this year, the council approved the staff recommendation to form the district, and then reconsidered the decision in the next, next meeting in February. And then council held and closed a public hearing on, in March, and then scheduled the deliberation for this evening. So no additional public testimony will be taken tonight. As a reminder, this reimbursement district involves Lone Oak Road. And here on the screen is the transportation planning, a transportation system plan alignment for Lone Oak Road. Portions in blue are completed, and the portions in yellow are not. So the Lone Oak Estates subdivision is required to construct the southerly section of Lone Oak Road from the development site to the south to Reese Hill Road, and also contributive proportional share toward the northerly section toward Mildred Lane. And the city engineer estimates the cost to construction of those projects to be $9.3 million. So the, the adopted district boundary, adopted in January, is divided into four sub-areas, ranging in cost from about $2,500 to approximately $10,000 per lot. The fee is not a lien or an assessment, and it's due and payable only when a property annexes and develops within the district. So based on the testimony received during the public hearings and the information requested by council, staff has provided three additional alternatives for the district boundary, and I'll show you those here. So alternative number one, removes the east area entirely. Alternative number two, retains the east area, but removes approximately 50 lots within the Creekside area that cannot be further subdivided. So these lots that are removed under this option are circled on the screen, and then here's the proposed boundary without the highlights. Okay, now alternative three, removes both the east area and the 50 lots in Creekside. And I'll add, the staff is not recommending that the fee, the district fee, be changed under any of these three alternatives, because systems development charges can be used to supplement the district fees. And the SDC funds would ensure that adequate funds are available to construct the road and bridge. So the, the current SDC eligibility of Lone Oak Road is 21%, and the original staff recommendation anticipated nearly $2 million in SDC funding for the bridge. However, state law would allow for the bridge to be up to 100% eligible for SDC funding, which could provide up to $6 million, or over $6 million in SDC funding toward the bridge. Even though the law allows for this eligibility, staff's not recommending that we'd authorize this level of, of funding, because annual transportation SDC revenues total about $1.2 million. So if the bridge were built today with 100% SDC funding, then the city would have to wait over five years before constructing any other transportation projects with SDC So I'll close my presentation with a table showing how costs... So, I'll close my presentation with a table showing how costs would be shared among the different sub-areas and among SDCs for each alternative. The adopted version of the fees, the original staff recommendation, is shown in the first column, and I've highlighted the SDC amount, and that's the amount that will vary with each option primarily. So, alternative one, which removes the east area, the cost difference is fairly small, and it's just the $300,000 collected in the east area, and that amount could actually be absorbed in increased density in the sub-areas as it develops. Alternative two is where the 50 Creekside lots are removed, and SDC funding would be increased from about $500,000 based on the adopted proposal. And then alternative three, where the east area and the Creekside areas are removed, we'll see the cumulative total there. So, and the staff report also included what we call the lowest revenue option, and this is really kind of a worst-case scenario. So, this column shows, it's actually alternative three, also coupled with the possibility that the Creekside development, Creekside Golf Course does not develop. And so, I'll point out a few conclusions from this table that I wanted to point out. First of them is that the staff recommendation, the adopted district, puts the lowest possible burden on SDCs, so the most money is collected from the district boundary itself. Second, the reimbursement district does not depend on revenues from the development of golf course, and nor does it presuppose development of the golf course, but the funding from the golf course just simply reduces the burden from SDCs. And then lastly, the table illustrates that even in the lowest revenue scenario, we're still within that maximum legal limit of the $6 million that could be brought from SDCs to fund this improvement. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'll be available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Question on that last graph or chart that you had up there as far as lowest. Wouldn't the actual lowest be if no one developed anything in the central or the balance of the west area, and hence, we got zero reimbursement for that?
I apologize. That was, it's not the lowest hypothetical, it's the lowest anticipated. So, we're not anticipating that there's no development in 20 years.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thanks.
Counselor Anderson.
Yes, thank you. I haven't even raised my hand yet, but you can see the look on my face.
I see you moving that one there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Plus, I haven't said anything yet on this one. Mr. Davis, two questions. One, the council has had discussions with the staff since the last time, and one of, at one point, one of the ideas was that if you reduced either the east area or the central area, you take them out of the equation, that that would increase the reimbursement amounts paid. But I take it now, that's not part of the plan.
That's not one of the alternatives we're recommending.
Okay, that still is a, that's an alternative.
Yes.
Okay. Then, there was also a discussion at the last public hearing, and there is a little bit of discussion in the information report provided to council that I think would be good to state publicly, and that is that the last meeting, there was some indication that gee, if it doesn't work, maybe we could take money from an ex-streets and roads bond to pay for it. And I understand now from your recommendation, under any of the scenarios that we are talking about with respect to this reimbursement district, there will not be any monies taken from the street and road bond. A future street and road bond.
None need to be taken.
Okay, okay.
Any further questions? Counselor McCoy.
Glenn, could you go back to your, you had the explanation of what the maximum would be and how long it would take to fund, I guess, from the SDCs if you...
That one?
Yeah. Explain it again to me.
So, the idea that if you wanted to use as much SDCs as possible to build this improvement as the state law would allow, you could use over $6 million toward this improvement. So, just saying that it's within, it's within legal possibility. We're not recommending that, mostly because our annual revenues are 1.2 million on average, so that's really dedicating five years' worth of SDC revenues toward that project.
That's what I thought, is that I want to make sure I understood what you said. Thanks.
Counselor Lewis.
Thanks, Glenn. Can you go to the slide that shows option, I think it was two? And that eliminates which pieces? Maybe go to the one that has the circles around the lots that you're talking about. Okay. So, what is the justification of leaving these out?
There are lots that are created, that are subdivided, and that are proposed for homes, that are already purchased, already developed, I mean, already subdivided and sold. And so, the feedback from the testimony was that we've purchased these properties, we plan on building homes, the homeowners have stated, and so, it's not a developer, so to speak, it's a, it's just a homeowner who has not yet built their home. So, that's been the testimony brought to the council.
These lots have not yet paid SDC fees, but would?
Yes, they have, yeah, they would pay SDCs at the time of home construction.
All right, thanks.
So, mechanically, they wouldn't be served with a bill over the next, it would occur with home construction. It'd be part of the cost of home construction. Is that how that would work? The mechanics of charging the ones in the circle?
As it stands now, when they come in for a building permit, they would be paying their SDC fees, which are approximately $15,000, plus on top of that, this district fee, which would be 10 more thousand.
Huh. If they...
If the lots within the circles were removed from the district, then they would just pay their SDCs, they wouldn't pay the reimbursement fee.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you. So, if this doesn't pass tonight, and the road goes forward, what would the process be for funding the road? How transparent would it be?
Well, the, there's, I guess there's a couple of different realities to that. There is a subdivision proposed that has a condition of approval on it, and so the subdivision conditions would have no source of funding to pay for this. So, the subdivider would really have limited ability to get reimbursement back. So, that would, as I believe Mr. Shipman has testified, that would likely result in some sort of alternative proposal, or maybe some sort of appeal as part of the process. So, that's the subdivision proposal side. And then the secondary issue would be how funded. That would really, the option I could, the only one I could think of would be a city-funded project through this capital program.
Yeah, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, I think the realistic, and we're really just guessing, we would probably see the southern leg built, because there's a couple of subdivisions coming in that, you know, need to put pieces of it in, and we could probably make that happen. We would struggle financially with getting the bridge built. So, I mean, SDCs would be applied, but there wouldn't be any leverage, so you see the math that Mr. Davis showed you. So, we'd be waiting a long time for the bridge, but you'd probably see the southern leg built.
Thank you, Director Fernandez. And I, we talked about this a little when I came in. Could you speak a little bit more about having growth fund itself, and how this is a part of that in these, in this proposal for the alternative three?
Well, really, under all the alternatives, all of the funding comes from development, either from this district fee or SDCs. So, in all scenarios. So, there's really no expectation in any of the options of any monies coming from bond monies, coming from other, any sort of levies of any sort. So, it's all development-funded, just in different forms.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Counselor McCoy.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the lowest revenue scenario.
Okay. No, you're moving the what? Say it again. I just couldn't hear.
I move approval of the lowest revenue scenario.
Which one is that?
Which is, you take a Creekside out and the east out, and the west and central would contribute $4.6 million, and the SDCs would contribute $4.6 million.
Do you have an alternative that'll show that, so that people can see as, that's as...
It's in our report. It's the lowest revenue.
Alternative three would include the golf course, and so you...
You had your lowest revenue scenario.
Okay.
So, that, yeah, that is not one of the alternatives given, it's a modification. The lowest revenue scenario would give a zero fee for the Creekside area, that's what you're proposing.
Okay. Who's the second?
Who's the second?
Want to try again?
Sure.
Will you second? Okay.
Okay. Here's my rationale here for this is, number one, I have thought from, pretty much after, a little after the vote, in the beginning, this, the district was too large. It was encompassed to take in a ton of money. The staff coming back and saying, well, we can use more SDC monies, and I understand the rationale, and I agree with it, makes the size of this, that large a size unnecessary. So, looking at this, one of the major things I've heard, as I've knocked on doors and campaigned here for the last couple of months, is we don't want taxpayers footing the bill for this bridge. This will result in taxpayers not footing the bill for this bridge. I've also heard from a variety of people, both in the Creekside neighborhood and across the ward, that are concerned, whether you agree with their rationale or not, they're concerned that including the Creekside lots in this proposal is leading to or indicating that the valley there where the creeks are will be developed with housing. They're adamantly opposed to that for a variety of reasons, from flood control to concerns with the golf course, to the fact that the developer didn't pay for it. Be that as it may, I've been sitting there looking for a way to reduce the size, still have the people at the top of the hill that are going to benefit it from the most, and that's the west and the central areas of that proposed development in the county, and still use, and in this case, SDC fees to cover the rest. That proposal does that. We end up with no taxpayer money involved, the district gets built, at some point, the bridge gets built, and the solution's solved. That's my rationale for making that motion.
Counselor Ross.
I think so the lowest cost I thought was just that it wasn't going to be developed, and that wouldn't be, so the reimbursement wouldn't be accrued, but not that that was an alternative where they weren't included. Is that, so we're basically kind of amending? Am I understanding correctly, we're kind of amending what your alternative was to not even include them altogether?
To say zero fee in the Creekside area is what I believe, I believe you're saying.
Okay. But if you look up there, the reimbursement district's in place for the west and the central areas on top of the hill, which are the majority of the acreage it would be developed.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I really found the discussion with staff very interesting on this, and two of the things that stuck out were the requirements to have that southern portion of Lone Oak Road developed, and if this doesn't go through, it would be a wait-and-see, wait-and-see, and then the first lot that develops it would share the majority of the cost, and each additional lot, if they developed, would have a different amount. It wouldn't be a public process, and it wouldn't necessarily be a shared cost for that area. The other thing that struck me was having the thought of growth pay for itself. McCoy talked about it a little bit with this coming out of a streets and bond measure. This is charging for development, and we want to make sure the development pays for itself.
Counselor Nanki.
There's been a lot of people who have issues with the previous developer and that bridge not being built. By going with the lowest alternative, if in fact the golf course redevelops, they will pay $0 towards that bridge. As that just jumped back into my head, so I can't support that alternative.
Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo what Counselor Nanki just mentioned. If I had to vote for any of these, I can't imagine voting for the motion on the floor. I could reasonably vote for alternative three, where if and when Creekside is developed, that those lots help pay for this, but I just, I can't understand the current proposal.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I have a point of order. I, and this is for the city attorney, I'm going to propose an alternate, one of the other alternates, but should I make that as a motion to amend, a substitute motion now, or wait till we vote it?
You can make it as a substitute motion.
Okay. I'm going to make a substitute motion that we do alternate one in the staff recommendation.
Alternate one?
Yes. Well, I got to get a second before I can discuss it.
Can you show us the map for one, Glenn, please?
I'll second it.
Roy, I'll second it.
Thank you. Thank you. All that does is take out East Side and the east far end of the area, and the testimony was pretty clear that of all those areas, East Side really gets any if no benefit, and I think that clearly the Creekside area and the alternate two, which would take out the circled areas, those are still places that are going to get benefit. I'm in favor of this one, because it removes the East Side, plus I think, and the two things that the staff has said tonight, and also when we've had other conversations, that the increased SDCs to the amount we're talking about there will help make up any deficit from the reimbursement fees, and secondly, that under this scenario, there would not be any use in the future of any streets, new streets and bridges bond. In other words, to Counselor Cook's point, it'll be paid for by the development.
Counselor Roy.
Can we have more than one substitute motion on the floor?
No. Not yet. Let's find out a little more about this motion. I am curious, when a reimbursement district is set, those portions that are not included at this time, can they be brought back in at a later date? Like, if there were a couple hundred new lots going in out there somewhere, can they be brought into the reimbursement district or become a new part?
Dan Atchison, City Attorney. So, it is possible for council to come back at a later date to amend a district, to add property to it, or to change the rates. Of course, the folks who had already paid in would kind of miss the benefit or the burden of that. In addition, this is tied into the required facilities that each property is required to build, so the applicant's proposal includes a requirement to build this facility. If another property, such as the Creekside area, comes in for subdivision approval, and this isn't a condition of approval, our ability to require them to pay to the district may not be there. So, there's a lot of variables to go back into a district and amend it after that point in time.
Correct me, but that sounds like what's been going on for a number of years, has been sort of corrective follow-up going on here. Am I missing something here? I mean, something has been missing here, and we're just sort of starting to cobble this thing back together. Can't we keep cobbling over time?
Is that a rhetorical question, Mr. Mayor?
That's what it feels like, really, that this has been...
So, for, to take a history lesson, when the original UGA for the original first phases of Creekside were approved, this was in the early '90s, we didn't have a reimbursement district provision in our code, so there's no ability for the developer to do that at that time. It didn't get in our code until 2005, I think, so...
So, who's going to pay for this thing, then? I'm not sure who is.
In 1993, who did they think was going to pay for it?
Yeah.
I assume they thought the developer would pay for it.
Huh. Okay. That's not rhetorical, right? Because that seems to be where we are today. Because that, that seems to be where we are today, is that still debating, okay. Councilor Nanki.
Question on the, the lots that were in the black circles and the areas in the West, Central, and East area. To get to the point where the lot is exactly the same as those in the black circles, those people would pay at that time, when they create a subdivision or another lot, so.
What are you saying?
That was the, the rationale as to why take the circles out, because they've already been through that program, and now we're coming back in when somebody's ready to build a house and say, oh, now you have to give us a whole bunch more extra money.
Right.
Which is inherently unfair, in my opinion, based on the land use activities that cause someone to have to pay that in the other areas.
Okay. Councilor Hoy.
And as I understand the, the two options, basically, alternative three is alternative one, but with those properties removed.
Correct.
So that's why I.
East out and circles out.
East out and circles out, which is why I think it's fundamentally fairer option than alternative one.
Well, Councilor Hoy, why don't we just, why don't we just say we'll take another motion? We'll let you ta, we'll let you try.
All right. I move that we adopt alternative three.
So procedurally, that's the substitute motion to the substitute.
So you act on this motion first and then see where you go.
Okay. Everybody clear? No, we're gonna, we're gonna try one at a time. It's kind of a survival thing. Yes, sir.
Well, this puts me in a little bit of a quandary, because if my, the, my first substitute motion wouldn't pass, I would be inclined to vote for the second substitute motion, but.
I think you're safe from here, Councilor.
Well, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I prefer mine, but so if I vote against this, we come to the second substitute motion, and I'd want to see that pass if I don't see this pass. So I wish we could do preference voting, but I don't think we can.
Okay. We're going to vote on this, on option three at this point. Ready? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Post. Aye. Okay, raise your hands, let's see what we got here. Motion passes. Okay, what do we got next?
I have a word. Do you want to take a break or do you want to, I mean, just go ahead and do it? If you like? Okay.
Okay, we're going to have another brief staff update.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, we're, we're on, we're doing good. You've only been here for a couple hours, let's get this done.
So before Bryce gets into his presentation, I just wanted to kind of go over a few things with you. I sent the councilors an email earlier, letting you know of a few things that'll come up. So there were some late submissions that were, that were sent in to council. I believe there was the applicant's final written argument that had a section regarding needed housing. I think it was page 25 and 26, or something like that, of their, 25 to 27 of their final written argument. One of the appellant's objected to that, and the applicant has agreed to withdraw it, so that portion of his testimony is being stricken, so please do not consider it. Second, there was an email from Ellen Stevens that went to, I know at least some of the councilors, it was identical text to each of you, just your name was different, and I believe some of the councilors may have read that. That was also received after the open record period, so please disregard that email if you received and read it. And lastly, there was a Statesman Journal article, I believe today or over the weekend, regarding an assisted care facility being constructed or developed nearby. Believe it or not, newspaper articles, if they're read and considered, are considered ex-party contacts, so if you happen to have read that, please disregard that as well. So just because we've had a lot of contacts come in like that, I just want to give everyone a chance to, to disclose if you've received any other ex-party contacts, and just if you're able to do so, make the declaration that you're not going to be unduly swayed by any communications you may have received after the record closed.
Just a clarifying question, other than the ones you just mentioned?
Yes, if you received any other communications from members of the public regarding this after the record closed?
No.
Councilor.
I received several comments, and I will not be swayed by those. I may still be able to make an impartial decision.
Councilor Nanki.
I did not read any articles or any emails regarding the subject.
Not even mine?
Councilor Kazer.
I've also received several emails, but I've forwarded those on to you, and they will not influence my decision either.
Just go to Bryce now.
Bryce?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Bryce Bishop with the Planning Division. I'm here tonight, like Glenn was, to give a brief recap of the previous proceeding we've had. In terms of refreshing our memories, this was a consolidated conditional use permit for a, or consolidated application, rather, for a conditional use permit and a quasi-judicial zone change. The conditional use permit was to relocate the Union Gospel Mission's men's shelter from its existing location, and then there was a zone change with it, the request to change the zoning of the property from Commercial Office to CB to allow the existing retail store on the property where the UGM would like to relocate their shelter facility to become permitted use. In terms of the procedure, you know, we had a public hearing, the appeal on April 23rd. At the close of that hearing, the council recommended that there be three open record periods established, April 30th, May 7th, and May 11th. And we did receive additional evidence and testimony, that was all forwarded to the council and all the parties so they could be aware of that, and the 120-day decision for this, the deadline for this decision is May 15th. So in terms of the proposed relocation, UGM wants to relocate their existing facility from 345 Commercial Street Northeast in the downtown, shown here, and they want to move four blocks north in the 700, 800 block of Commercial Street Northeast, shown up here, across the, the Commercial Street from the city's proposed new police station. In terms of the, the applications, only the conditional use permit was the subject of the appeal. The zone change was not contested. The conditional use permit requests the relocation within increased capacity to assert approximately 300 people. That was the original request in the, in the notice and everything that went out with the application. And in order to approve the conditional use permit, there are three criteria that are, that must be found to be met. The first one is that the use is allowed as a conditional use in the zone. The second one is that the proposed, the reasonably likely adverse impacts of proposed use can be minimized to this immediate neighborhood, and then finally, that the proposed use will be compatible with and have minimal impact on the appropriate development pattern and livability of the surrounding property. During the course of the public hearing, we've received lots of testimony, both in favor and in opposition. The testimony and support expresses the, the desire to have the facility because the existing one is out of date, it's in appropriate location in the downtown, close to, near the downtown, close to other existing services, and then the existing facility is out of date, and concerns of opposition, you know, related to the size of the facility and whether or not it could be managed with the, with the greater number of individuals, the effects of business development in the area, and whether or not this use would be compatible with and support the vision in this area of the north downtown. So, the hearings officer originally established five conditions of approval that are identified up here on the screen, in order to minimize the impacts and to ensure that the proposal met the criteria of the, for the conditional use that's applicable in the code. The first one is that they had to orient the building, either the primary entrance to the building, either to Commercial Street or to the alley, and if, if access was to be provided from the alley, they'd have to have 24-hour video surveillance along the entire length of the alley, alley for security. A second condition was established to require signage to be installed that would direct the patrons to the waiting areas on the site and discourage loitering in the public right-of-way and on the sidewalk in front of the building. Third condition was established to require a state highway approach permit, as required because Commercial Street is a highway, and so the driveways that will be serving the development require that. Another condition, condition four, established a requirement to provide a pedestrian connection from the primary guest insurance of the facility to the public sidewalk system, and that could, you know, be via the alley. And then there's a final condition, condition five, that required the screening of any outside storage areas with the side obscuring fence, wall, or hedge. And so those were the five additional conditions that were established by the hearings officer and the hearings officer decision. That decision was appealed, and then subsequent to that, through the process, the applicant has proposed, you know, now, six additional conditions that are identified on, on the, on the screen. Some of these were discussed at the prior April 23rd council public hearing. There are a couple new ones and, and a tweak to one of the conditions that I'll discuss here. So the additional condition six establishes a maximum limit of 300 people, you know, for the facility, and then it goes, in, in the final argument submitted by the applicant, it adds an additional requirement that out of those 300 maximum beds that would be provided for overnight guests, 78 would be, a minimum of 78 would have to be dedicated to the transitional housing element of the use rather than overnight shelter. Condition number seven is a requirement that the applicant install secured coverage storage for personal belongings on the property. Condition eight required the incorporation of SEP TED or Crime Prevention through Environmental Design features into the design, and those are three of them. One is to ensure that the outside waiting areas on the site were visible, you know, to the areas within the building so that the people within the building can see the guests outside, and there's that additional eyes on the, on the folks for safety and security. Limit the shrub height on the, on the property to no more than 36 inches to ensure abilities for visual surveillance. And then finally, orient the pedestrian, the main access into the site away from Commercial Street, and that would instead be to the alley. And so along with condition number eight, as you see in the applicant's final written argument, they request a modification to condition one established by the hearings officer, because that condition one established two alternatives, either primary access from Commercial Street or to the alley. And so the applicants would, you know, elect to have the access from Commercial Street, and therefore, in the recommendation, there would be a modification to condition one to require access to the alley, and then, and then they would be away, you know, from Commercial Street as indicated in condition eight, so those two conditions work together in harmonious. Another condition that was proposed was to require 24-hour surveillance of the site, either through video cameras or through patrols by the Union Gospel Mission. An additional condition 10 was proposed by staff, and this was discussed at the last meeting, to require a photometric plan that shows the lighting on the site to ensure all areas on the property will be adequately lit for safety and security on the premises. And then finally, one last condition that was, has been proposed by the applicant in their final written argument, is to allow for the provision of indoor bathroom facilities that are open 24 hours to men to help deal with, you know, hygiene and cleanliness issues that have been an issue that's associated with the homeless community in the downtown. So with that, based on those additional conditions of approval, as recommended by staff and the applicant, and the findings included in the staff report, staff does feel that the proposed conditional use meets the criteria of the code, that use is a conditional use in the zone, the reasonably likely adverse impacts of the use can be minimized and are minimized through the imposition of the conditions that have been discussed tonight, and the proposed use will be reasonably compatible with and have a minimal impact on the development pattern and the, and the appropriate and the livability of the surrounding area. So we recommend that the council approve the zone change from CO to CB, and then also the conditional use permit as recommended with the conditions of approval and the modification to condition number one, to, you know, ensure that the access for the, the guests is from the alley, not to Commercial Street.
Any questions? Okay. Councilor Lewis.
Yeah, just one question on condition 11. It appears that that would require that the facility stay open 24 hours a day, people coming and going.
That would be something that, that the applicant has proposed, and that would be addressed in the design, and so the, the restroom would have to be, I would assume, located in a, in a way to allow the, the folks to come off the street and access those facilities.
Okay. Councilor Kazer.
Thank you. In the rebuttal testimony, there was some conversation about a good neighbor agreement. Was that discussed with the applicant? The idea of crafting some type of agreement with the surrounding property and business owners and neighborhoods about how UGM plans to kind of conduct their business and their clients and how to respond to potentially any kind of adverse impact? Is there, was, was that kind of conversation had with the applicant?
I'd direct that to City Attorney Dan Atchison.
So, Dan Atchison, City Attorney, because this is quasi-judicial land use and the record's closed, we can't add new evidence into the record at this time, so the conditions that, that have already been imposed and the conditions that the applicant are, is proposing now are all, all we have on the table.
On the conditions, the enforcement mechanism for those conditions, I'm thinking of the storage, the 24-hour restroom, the, the operational surveillance system, whether by foot or by camera or whatever, the lights that work. How are those enforced if, because I've seen the lockers removed, both inside and outside, and, and other changes occur at the existing facility? How do, how is that guaranteed that that will continue through time?
Well, the conditions of approval are development standards under the code. And with development standards, if there is a, an issue, an issue of non-compliance or if there is, you know, a concern, you know, somebody can make a complaint, and then we would have compliance services staff that would be able to go and investigate to see if they are maintaining, you know, if they have the video cameras, if they are maintaining the surveillance, you know, tapes for the 14 days that they're required to. So it'd kind of be a complaint-based response, based on, and that's kind of how any condition of approval would be, you know, enforced, as placed on a decision.
So, they close off the lockers or storage areas, that would become a complaint, and then our compliance services folks would go out and say, we have a complaint reopen? Or how, how, what's the mechanism here?
That's correct. So, so we would not be able to actively monitor this site on any given period of time, and so we do rely on residents, we rely on, rely on those around the site to let us know of when those issues might arise, and then with that information that prompts the investigation, if and when we do see through an investigation as a code compliance case that any of these conditions are not being met, then that can be grounds for some sort of compliance effort or even an enforcement action.
Enforcement action could include a civil penalty as well, so there's a daily civil penalty.
Councilor Cook.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification on condition six. So the 300 max, that is including the 78 beds, so 220 overnight guests.
Yeah, 222, you know, and then the 78 would be the balance of the 300.
And that's up from, wasn't it 74 in the original?
It was 76 and, and 220, I think 224 and 76.
Okay.
Any further questions for staff? Councilor Kazer.
Thank you. I move the staff recommendation with conditions one through 11 as presented.
Second? Second by Osik. Councilor.
Thanks. So I know there are a lot of concerns about UGM moving more closely into our north neighborhoods, and I've read the testimony we've received on both sides. I want to know, I want people to know that I, I live here too. I live only about six, seven blocks from this proposed location. So I'm personally taking on the potential risks that have been identified by the public testimony about potentially lowering property values, potentially personally experiencing more undesirable behavior by people experiencing mental health issues or drug, drug addiction in my neighborhood. But I am also personally taking on the potential benefits that have been identified through the public testimony about the potential for more people experiencing homelessness, to have temporary housing, to have the potential to have access to resources in an improved and modern environment, and to have the potential for this project to be wildly successful and be seen as an asset in our neighborhood and city. I've also witnessed that this case has brought out a degree of acrimony that perhaps can only be rivaled by the conversation about the third bridge. The testimony we have received from both sides, and I'll use my air quote "sides," if you will, has at times reached a level of awfulness that the reasons for this application have become lost. It seems that this instead has become a referendum on the condition of being homeless itself, which it is not. This is a quasi-judicial land use application with narrow criteria, and because of that, this body needs to make its determination on these criteria. But because the degree of discontent has reached such a high pitch triggered by this application, I am strongly encouraging UGM to form a formal partnership with its surrounding property owners and business owners, the Candu, Grant, and Highland Neighborhood Associations and the City of Salem. This partnership would focus on addressing concerns, mutually dispelling rumors, giving acknowledgement and praise where due, and provide an ongoing forum for discussions and strengthening relationships. I personally want this endeavor to be wildly successful, as I stated earlier, but I believe that the only way to achieve this will be for UGM to work in concert with its neighbors to make it happen.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. I agree with much of what Councilor Kazer has said, not all, but much, and I do have to say though that I have. And I do have to say, though, that I have read the legal arguments. I've, you know, I would say in excess of 50 and is maybe as many as 60 pages, and you all will recall that I'm a lawyer, so it was actually kind of fun to read those legal arguments and to look at them as an intellectual exercise. But I have to tell you that I think that as far as the arguments go, the applicant, looking at this, taking a more narrow view of things, is the correct... In my view, the correct view of this. For example, the legal criteria and for definitions and treatment of potential adverse impacts of limitations thereon, of what is the immediate neighborhood, what is the surrounding property, what is livability, what is appropriate development within the codes that we've got. You know, I have no other conclusion to say that the proposed use is allowed in the zone with the conditions that we have. So I too hope this is wildly successful. I am sure that Mission and the neighbors will have... Will talk this out over the time that the Mission is there, and I hope they do. So I'm going to be voting in favor of it.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Counselor Anderson on the legal point, and I'll leave it at that. That being said, we've been looking towards this for many years, and possibly just the mayor was involved in the previous decisions that started leading us down this path of this. So we've known it was going to take place, and we put restrictions on that at that time as well, and we have more restrictions now to enable that criteria to be met. And I believe that they have been. Look forward to working with that whole system as it comes online. It's much needed.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with most of what all three of my colleagues have said so far. I guess in considering this, I've heard a lot of what I consider fear-based testimony, and that's not a good place to consider this from. And based on just strictly our role here, I think we have no choice but to approve it. But I don't approach it from that place. I'm looking at this amazing resource for our community, and this is only going to allow them to be that much better. And we're talking about a four-block move, okay? That's... We're not... It's not like it's going to an entirely new area of the city. It's four blocks, and this is going to allow the Mission to just be so much better, and I'm looking forward to supporting it.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I certainly hope you're right, Counselor Hoy, and I share the concerns and also the hope that Counselor Kazer mentioned earlier. Some of my concerns, it's not the four-block move, but for me, the expanded overnight capacity seemed to be in conflict with our Housing First approach and our Housing First philosophy. So I understand that things can't continue the way that they are now, status quo-wise, and we do need to change. And I'm grateful that at least two other beds were added for transitional housing. I think that's a big need in our community. I'm also really pleased to see the restroom added as well as part of that use.
Anybody else? We have a motion, staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to information reports. Sorry, Counselor.
So is that the end of any potential expartee? Just for folks?
Thank you, Counselor Nanki. So in a meeting coming to you in the near future, will we bring a written order for you to approve so expartee still applies to this? So please try to limit communications on this issue until that order comes back.
Okay. Information reports, are there any questions, comments? I hope everyone will take a look at this Human Rights Advisory Commission report. This is really, I wasn't kidding, this is a very good commission. They take on some of the toughest issues in this community, and I think do it really quite well. I particularly want to thank the leadership and our staff. Gretchen Bennett just does a great job working with this group, so I hope you had a chance to take a look at it. Okay? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I echo your comments, and I thought I saw someplace, maybe it was in the city manager's report, that there will be a movement afoot at some point to change it just to the Human Rights Commission as opposed to the Human Rights and...
They're looking at that right now.
Okay, yeah, I would urge that because I think informally among all of us here, we call it the Human Rights Commissions. We don't go under the whole larger nomenclature, so I'd be happy to think...
I think their plan is to bring that to us.
Yeah, that's great.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, and we should look at other commissions like SPRAB as well, and TOT, and rename them appropriately so that they...
Forget what they are.
We can remember their acronym spell out. That being said, on 6C, on the Fairview Industrial Drive properties, I know there was some concerns from a neighboring development, but I couldn't find anything from Morningside Neighborhood Association. Did they provide any comments at all? And I'm seeing head shake and no. That's why I couldn't find them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. All righty, there's no further comments on information reports. We'll go to first readings.
Ordinance Bill Number 5-18, an ordinance granting a franchise to Comcast of Oregon One Inc.
Ten years in making.
Wow. Jeez, Doug, do you want to say any of that? It's a whole career being resolved here, man.
Yeah, I move staff recommendation. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Ordinance Bill 6-18, an ordinance granting a right-of-way use agreement to Mobility LLC for placement of wireless facilities in the public rights of way.
Move staff recommendation? Second.
Oh, boy. Okay, second by Anderson. Okay, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Ordinance Bill 7-18, an ordinance granting a right-of-way use agreement to New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for placement of wireless facilities in the public rights of way.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I move staff recommendation? Second.
Second by Hoy. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Go to second readings.
Ordinance Bill 3-18, an ordinance changing the Salem area comprehensive plan map designation, neighborhood plan map designation, and zoning map designation of certain properties in West Salem, amending Salem revised code chapters 110, 111, 553, 606, 608, 609, 703, 806, and 900, repealing chapter 607, 610, and 611, and creating chapters 525, 535, and 556. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoyd?
Aye.
Counselor Ossig?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Any further public comment? Is anyone here waiting to address the council? All righty, nothing left on our agenda, so we are adjourned.